If you could pull up my slides, that would be super helpful when you get the chance. No worries. I'm like, I can just talk about stuff, but it is, I think impactful to see the visuals. Cause I tried to break it down by what we've been able to accomplish count or in our full area, not countywide, sorry, but also specifically in Clearfield impacting Clearfield residents. And so that's something I wanted to share with you guys. So I'm also here to thank you for your support of North Davis Communities They Care. We're a coalition that works to prevent, you can go to the next slide please. That works to prevent youth substance misuse and promote mental wellness in youth. So we support youth and families through evidence-based programming. And this is our data-driven model. Hopefully you can see that on your screens and you don't have to look behind you. Great. Okay. So we use the Sharp survey data to guide our efforts. And then we do listening sessions to gather qualitative data on top of that and compare it with some archival data when we have access to that. And then we use all of that to select research-based interventions that meet the needs of our community. So as much as we like warm fuzzies, this is a data-driven effort and not just some warm fuzzies, right? And so we do, we do follow this process to keep us on track towards those goals. Okay. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay. So this is what we've been able to do in our North Davis area. And I want to share that the financial support that Clearfield City offers and that the other cities in our area offers are critical to maintaining our efforts because we do have federal grant funding, but it's contingent on a local match. And so I'm going to show you some of the ways we've been able to, I guess, build your investment by bringing in additional state and local funding dollars to support our efforts. But just know that your contribution is critical to maintaining that. So we did this year support some opportunities for youth to engage in after-school extracurricular clubs. And so in Clearfield, that meant about $1,800 was allocated to that and to support the North Davis Honor Society Dance Club, the Hope Squad. And the reason we did that is because we found in our Sharp survey data that youth don't have adequate opportunities and access for that type of positive involvement in the school level. And so we wanted to support that. And then we are also really excited and I'm going to share with you guys, by the end of this week, we're going to have completed our summer camp report. But we voted to allocate $30,000 to support the Davis School District Summer Camps in our area. And $15,000 of that went specifically to South Clearfield Elementary. And so these are Title I students who otherwise did not, most of them have access to any summer learning or enriched opportunities, summer camps and other ways because of their income. And so these were nominated by the principal for what, students who had, who were struggling with their literacy or who had other social or socioeconomic needs to participate. So I'm going to share with some quotes and stories about that in a minute. But just know that that impacted 145 students in Clearfield. And we were really excited about partnering with the school district to offer that. We also continue to offer our evidence-based parenting classes. A lot of parents want to do well. All parents want to do the best things for their kids, but not all of us were given the skills to do so. It doesn't come naturally and maybe we didn't have the right models growing up from our own families. And so these evidence-based parenting programs are critical to help bridge that divide and support positive outcomes for youth. So in Clearfield, this last year, that meant that we served 18 parents with Strengthening Families Program, 16 parents with Circle of Security Parenting Program, which is targeting younger children and building a positive parent and caregiver attachment. If you could go to the next slide. And then we are continuing to offer Catch My Breath, which is an evidence-based vaping prevention education to prevent a lifelong addiction to nicotine. So we offered that to mostly Clearfield students. We got 100, 852 Clearfield students received that program in the last year. And we were really excited about the partnership we had with North Davis Junior High. And continue to offer that as well to, to offer parent and mentor trainings and mental health first aid trainings as well. So our, our training efforts are not just focused on vaping prevention. It's also mental health-related efforts that we're doing. And then we did partner with you guys on the Clearfield Night Out Against Crime, which I saw pictures and it looked freaking awesome. So.
Yeah, thank you for helping make that happen.
Yeah, that was, that was super cool. And you guys have an incredible youth commission. Really those, those kids are fantastic. So it was great to meet them and support the work they're already passionate about. All right. Next slide. So these are the outcomes we're seeing from our parenting programs. We do collect outcome data on them locally. And we're seeing that it decreases parenting stress, it increases relationship closeness, and it decreases family conflict. And then it gives the parents skills to make family rules and follow through on appropriate consequences. And so we call that family management skills, right? So these are all critical areas that all parents need to have. And we are seeing improvements from those who participate in our classes. Okay. We can go to the next slide. So this is just a little taste of our summer camp efforts. And then I'm going to send you guys our email, like this full report. And you can see there are so many more quotes and stories and pictures. And families were so thankful for this opportunity. It made a huge impact in their lives. Many of these parents work during the day during the summer and their kids are just kind of getting by, right? And so summer camp is a structured, positive learning activity that made a huge difference for these families. So when kids went to summer camp, they get evidence-based small group literacy support. So it's not just, you know, one teacher to 30 students. They're in groups of three to five, working on their literacy skills in an evidence-based curriculum. And then we also did social emotional learning to help them build their social skills. There was science, technology, engineering and math activities. Lunch was provided, field trips and other fun activities. And this was all at no cost to families. And the parents had just raved about it and were so grateful. I'm going to read just that bottom one in the right corner. The impact summer camp has had on my family is knowing my children are cared for when I can't be there. It helped our family to be able to work and be home with them in the afternoons and nights. Our family would not be able to function and work a normal job without the safe space that summer camp provides. It ensured my child got meals and helped keep a schedule for the kids. So one of many quotes. Okay. We'll go to the next slide. All right. So our family programs this year that we're continuing to offer, we're hosting them at the following locations, offering both English and Spanish. And Chandra with Clearfield City has graciously agreed to help us promote these and share them because really we want families who need them, who need these resources most to hear about them. And if they don't know they exist, then that's, we're not doing our job well. So we're being as creative as we can and getting the information out to the community. And we appreciate your help with that. Next slide. Okay. So coming up just around the corner, we have a youth summit. And we'd love for you to share that as well. We're very excited about it. And youth are going to have the opportunity to learn about leadership and mental wellness, planning their life after high school and healthy relationships. And it's going to be very fun, interactive, free, free lunch and snacks, all provided through grants and donors that we're, yeah, grateful to have. So this is actually available countywide and the U credit makeup is also available for most students, but it's going to depend on their school, their principal. Okay. Next one. The next thing we have coming off that we're actually hosting a launch for, we're going to be hosting it here. So save the date. It'll be on the second floor on August 15th. And we're inviting all the youth councils from our area, including the Clearfield Youth Commission to help with this. But we're launching a social norms campaign. And the idea of social norms campaign with substance use prevention is that many youth have falsely high perceptions of how many of their peers are using drugs and alcohol. So if you look at the 10th graders specifically on the vaping product, you can see that about, they perceive that about 48% of their peers are vaping when really it's 13%. And so if we think of this as a normal, common behavior among our peers, we're much more likely to do it ourselves. That's just human nature for you, especially with teens. And so we're launching an effort to message around this in partnership with Davis School District so that kids can get correct information on how many of their peers are actually using. And that'll continue to drive our substance use rates down. So the next slide has some examples of what Bonneville CTC did. And we're going to be working with a media company to tailor it and make this really Davis County. And you know, our schools, focus on our schools branding and our look and feel. Okay. Next slide. All right. So that's my contact information. I guess really that was, my goal was to report out to you to see that you, that we have been working hard to use the funds well that you guys contribute to North Davis CTC and to grow them through applying for grants. And see how, and I wanted you to see how it affected Clearfield residents. But I also would love if you could send somebody to join our coalition efforts on a more regular basis. I know schedules are tricky. We do have several meetings that are like in the evenings or that are over Zoom. And so if we could have frequent participation, really who's in the room helps us make decisions on what the priorities are, on how we're going to use funding. And so having your city even better represented would only serve your residents better. So that's my request of you. But other than that, you guys are phenomenal partners and we're grateful to work with you. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to applaud you. Cause I, I was a little more involved early on in my tenure on the council. There were more regular meetings, but I, since you and Jess have become the coordinators for the CTC, you've really been instrumental in making things start moving from my perception. And I just want to say while I'm definitely committed to being more of a participant going forward, there's tons of opportunities, not just to, as council members participate in the work that you guys do. Like they host a lot of different community meetings through different councils that impact that work specifically. So I'll make a pitch if any of you have any free time, as finite as it is to get involved. It's really opened my eyes as someone who doesn't have kids and the perception of what illicit use looks like is really guided by pop culture and the media I consume. It was really heartening to see like so few of our kids, and particularly in Clearfield, aren't smoking. They're not vaping. They're not doing hard drugs. They're not drinking. And so much of that work is, it starts at home and the stuff you do, not just for kids, but for families. Like we should all be involved in some capacity, whether that's just at our homes or getting out and helping where I can. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Beautiful. Well, that takes us to our open comment period. I have one form here. If there's anyone else here to speak, there are forms out in the hallway. If you could fill those out and hand those either to myself or Suresteed, but Todd Myers, the mic is yours. If you wouldn't mind just saying your name into the microphone.
Todd Myers, 185 South State Street, Salt Lake City. Mayor and council, I just stopped by to say thank you. My, my job is I work for Maverick Convenience Stores. I've probably permitted in more than a hundred different cities. And on more than one occasion here in your city. You have a development staff that is ranks amongst the best. I know when I go into a pre-application meeting, they're knowledgeable. They're welcoming. If they say, hey, we're going to send you a utility map, you know, by the time you get back to the office, you'll have that utility map email to you. They've always exceeded my expectations. There's one that I just really wanted to point out and his name is Tyson Starter. I think I mispronounced that. Sorry about that. He is a planner with your city and on the current project that we're working on, we've had numerous challenges. And numerous times I've had to call him up and needed a quick answer on something. He's never let me down. He's always made my lack of schedule his priority. It was very evident to us last week. On the current project, it was the day. It was that we either needed to close on the property or we needed to cancel the contract. And there were some questions that dealt with the neighboring property and how zoning would be affected by them. I reached out to Tyson. I don't know what he dropped, but he took care of my needs and it was greatly appreciated. So we did close on the property and will continue moving forward and hopefully get that one under construction soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for taking the time out of your evening to, to come share those remarks. I think I speak for all of us when we say we're really proud of Tyson and his professionalism, but also how he's stepped up over the last year or so. So thank you. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak during the open comment period? Okay. If not, then that will move us to item number three on our agenda, which is to consider an approval of a proclamation designating Clearfield City as a Just Serve City. And I believe we have Joni Phillips here from Just Serve. If you want to take a moment to speak.
Thank you. I appreciate taking a couple of minutes. Joni Phillips, Just Serve and Clearfield resident, very proud of it. Just Serve is a free app available on your phone or on the computer at justserve.org that links service projects in the area with people who are willing to serve. And there are, hopefully you realize, a lot of projects going on right now with 9/11 Day of Service that we've been very involved in. And there's been several in Clearfield that have been amazing. We had a project at the front runner station in Tower Park just this last Saturday. There were 150 people that showed up and I drove by late, I drove by during and stopped them.
Needs for service unity? I mean, the 9/11 one you mentioned was, was a significant one. But you know, aside from that, types of needs that you're seeing, you know, consistently? Just as far as requests or does it vary?
Okay. Thank you. Currently in Clearfield, the Lotus Impact has several projects on Just Serve that they're looking for volunteers to come in and help with their after-school programs with reading, math, art, sports. We work really well with a couple of our food banks in the area. Nations for Christ does amazing work and they have really great support from Just Serve. And the Hope Center has used us quite a bit. And you know them, you're smiling. They're awesome.
And Open Doors uses Just Serve quite a bit.
What does?
Open Doors does.
Yes. Yes. They're very active on Just Serve. We do a lot when you see the food drives come through. We do a lot with that. But there's things that happen every day that can be on Just Serve. And so any of the things I see on social media that Clearfield City looks for people to help with, the Fourth of July activities, which are amazing. And you can also post that on Just Serve. And it's, I call it another tool in your toolbox of spreading the word. We're not a guarantee of volunteers, but it's a great way to spread the word and invite people from all over to help. I'm also working with getting Wasatch Elementary, just right next door, is going to be doing some projects because they're grateful for community support for their students and want to be able to do a service project with that. So we're hoping to see that this year. And Clearfield High School has a fledgling cute little Just Serve club and they're reaching out and beginning to do more there as well. So the things are coming and happening and, and more opportunities all the time. Thank you. Any others?
That's beautiful. Thank you, Joni.
Thanks so much.
Suresteed, remind me, before I request the motion, am I reading the proclamation? Bless you. Yes. Yep.
Traditionally, we have.
Yeah. I just wanted to get the order right, you know, I'm, I'm the new guy. Okay. Well, that being said, I'll, I'll read the proclamation before requesting that motion. This is the proclamation for commitment to volunteerism in Clearfield City. Whereas we firmly believe that the values of compassion, empathy and community support are the foundation of united, harmonious society and fosters connections that transcend differences. And whereas the strength and prosperity of our cities, towns and villages are based in the selflessness of its residents to serve and uplift one another. And whereas we acknowledge the profound impact that can be achieved when we extend a helping hand to our neighbors, especially those of diverse backgrounds and lifting them up and collectively working to improve lives. And whereas we nurture a culture of giving within our cities, emphasizing that volunteerism is not just a duty, but a source of personal fulfillment and community strength. And as we work side by side with and learn from each other, mutual understanding increases, misconceptions can be corrected and new friendships are built. And whereas we urge all citizens to care for one another, volunteer and engage in acts of service and kindness that contribute to our city's betterment and its inhabitants' wellbeing, regardless of background or belief. And whereas the Clearfield, whereas the Clearfield City has joined a growing list of supporters, including the president of the National League of Cities and hundreds of leaders to date in making a commitment to volunteerism, now therefore be it proclaimed, I am not Mark Dakota Worth, Mayor Pro Tem of Clearfield City, that the city of Clearfield commits to promoting volunteerism, leveraging justserve.org to make it easier for residents to find and engage in volunteer opportunities and will regularly acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of volunteers in witness thereof. That's more for the signature. But with that being read, council, I will now consider a motion proclaiming Clearfield as a Just Serve City.
I'll move to, move to approve the proclamation designating Clearfield City as a Just Serve City.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Roper and a second from Councilmember Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor, for the applause. Okay. That takes us to the last item on our agenda, an update on fiscal year 2025 year-end financial status. Rich, I think that's you.
Good evening. So tonight I'll be walking you through the budget to actual for fiscal year 25. And look at our outlook coming, looking forward, any key insights that may, we want to look at as we're moving forward. I do want to say this disclaimer, I'll probably say it again, it's not done yet. I've, I just cut a check for FY, fiscal 25 yesterday. And not all the revenues, especially interest is not all booked. So everything we're seeing here is going to change. We will see the final numbers in the audit in December. And go. I don't know how to proceed here. Is my laser in the way? This is weird. Okay. I don't know what I did. I don't know what I did. Yeah. Okay. So water fund. This, the draft net here, this is important because we have our, we want to make sure we have enough coming in to support all, and as we learned in recent history, projects went up so much in the last five years that it, it's been a challenge to have adequate resources to fund these projects coming up in the next 10 years. The net operating has been, this is below what we needed. And now it's a little above, this is a little misleading because some of our operating expense, the meters, we moved that from an operating expense to a capital expense or our meter change out project. But it's still above what we budgeted. It's above the 1.1 net operating increase to fund future projects. Part of that is growth and we'll see that throughout. And we've had metering improvements with that project. Consumption is up 16% from last year, same time period, and 52% from two years ago. So the, the increased rates have not affected consumption, although we have better metering now and there is growth. So those factors play into it. Revenue, same thing. These revenues increases are higher than our rate increase, but growth and better metering. Looking at the general fund, our main fund, tax-supported fund, not utility funds. We budgeted to spend down. I took out transfers just to simplify it, but we budgeted. So it's a little different if you looked at the actual budget, but it's 1.6 million we've budgeted to spend down. But we're looking at it positive of 2 million. 100, we're at 103% of revenues that we budget and 88% of expenses. I am projecting currently that we will be at 25% of revenues by the, by the time we get to the auditor. Right now we're at 25% of revenues. At the end of '24, we were just under 30%, so we've spent down some of our, our reserves by that metric, almost 5%. One issue is in the FY, when we were making FY '26 budget, we knew more data. So the beginning balance we were using in the FY '25 budget was about half million higher than what I'm projecting it'll come in as. Again, not everything has been booked, especially interest. So that, that will change. I don't know if it'll get to that number, but it will change. Any questions on that? Okay. This, I just wanted to show by category, all the different types of revenues that we have. All mostly above 100%, except for intergovernmental. And that's probably going to be more monies in next year. It's CDBG drawdowns. Sales tax. Sales tax is leveling out. So our increase was only 2.7% higher than last year. If you look at the, from fiscal '20 to '24, we averaged nine and a half percent increases. If you look at the 10-year period prior to fiscal '20, it's five and a half percent. So this is one of our lowest sales tax growth years we've had. I think my data goes back 15, 17 years. Still, we went, we were above budget. Historically though, we've been well above budget. So this is kind of. Historically though, we've been well above budget, so this is kinda right on budget. Energy use tax decreased seven percent over last year. We averaged two point six percent increase, but this is a decrease and below budget. We talked about this last time, the M-Bridge or the natural gas, they decreased their rates thirty percent in August of twenty-four. So that is playing into it. But Rocky Mountain Power increased their rates. So yet to be seen how this will play out. It's one of the more difficult revenues to project, and it's unfortunate because it's our now third, it used to be our second, but now our third highest revenue source. But that's why we wanna keep an eye on it. Aquatic and Fitness Center, before we look at this, I just wanna point out that we was closed on, not planned, December, January timeframe. I forgot how long was it. So that did affect revenues, so less revenues in the prior two years and below budget. I'll talk about the net operating on that in just a second. Building permits, lower than budget, and lower than the last five years. I did get some county data that shows our dwelling unit permits in Davis County by year. This was May of twenty-five, when this data, at that point, there was only four hundred forty-four permits in the county, but fifty percent decrease from the same period the prior year. Not trying to make projections off this, but it's just something to consider. Fines and forfeitures has steadily increased the last four years, which, that was not the trend before that. If we could go back further here, it was just steadily decreasing. So that did exceed budget, and that is exciting. So other revenues that are of note, already without even booking all the interests in, I wouldn't, I don't wanna say general fund, actually governmental funds, were a million higher in interest earnings than we budgeted. Plan check fees, it's indicator of future growth, that's down twenty percent from last year, down seven percent from two years ago. Cable TV franchise taxes, which is not a large part of our budget, but it significantly decreased, more than I expect. It's been decreasing for years, but it jumped this year. Again, not a big part of our budget, though. And I assume that's a lot of cable. What's that called, when they're trying to get off, I forgot, cable cutters, that's not the word. Cut the cord, cord cutters, that's what I was thinking of. Coda forcing was up percentage-wise a lot, but it was prior year liens from prior years during a sale or a refi. Utility fees the last three years have continued to go down, I'm not sure why. Less people are laid, the only thing I could say is we switched to express bill pay, and people were able to be on auto pays. I'm not sure if that's true, but that's my, that's what I, that's the only thing I can think of currently. Sewer storm increased higher than the rate increases, same thing, it's growth probably, and we have improved our billing process. This is all funds expenditures by category of personnel, material services, capital outlay, debt, and transfers. Overall, sixty-five percent spent of budget, but a lot of that is capital that we plan for, but don't get to it, and we roll it to the next year usually. But personnel, pretty close to budget percentage-wise, and this is typical of what usually happens on our expense side. Some things to note are part-time, we did not spend nineteen percent or four hundred seventy-one thousand of that. Two hundred sixty-seven of that was Aquatic Center. Left on the table for that, probably because of the closure, that probably helped. We did not spend thirty-five percent of our travel. Insurance was over across the board because we had to switch to a prepay, and that was not budgeted for. And so it's not a cash, it doesn't really affect cash, it's just timing of when that expenses. We had to put another month in last year to prepay health insurance. This is programs or services with direct revenue, so, and this is the percent of general revenue support. A lot of governmental services are a hundred percent government support, so these three just have their own revenues. And so it makes it more interesting, let's just look at one at a time. The Aquatic and Fitness Center, just understand it's about twenty-five percent back here of government, general fund support. The rest from their, from fees charged. The budget is what we anticipated to subsidize or support the Aquatic Center, and this was the actual. So it was below budget, even though it's trending up. And again, if the revenues, if that had not closed, it probably would have been even a little lower. So in this situation, lower is better. Recreation, same thing, lower than budget, but not as good as last year. And arts, less than budget. Yeah, same thing, same trend. Okay. Just a couple slides in the economy, and then we're done. Unemployment, Davis County, three percent, this is as of July of twenty-five data. State of Utah, three point three percent, United States, four point two percent. Monthly wage, monthly wages, the average monthly wage in the state of Utah, this is as of the first quarter of twenty-five data, fifty-eight hundred a month. That is up four percent from the prior year, and it's outpacing inflation, which is at three percent. If you do go back as far as outpacing inflation, if you go back to twenty-twenty-one and did do that same calculation, that would not be the case. But in the last, in this timeframe, it was outpacing inflation. Lastly, this is taxable sales, Davis County data, not our data. The first, I don't know if it's the first one actually, but it just usually sees, I don't have the data there, but, oh, actually I do, it's right here. Zero, zero percent, so this is the first time it went negative growth. And that, again, that's first quarter twenty-five. State, much lower. And that correlates with our leveling off with our sales tax. Seventy percent of our sales tax is from the state, so that's keeping us going there. I don't have the, usually at this point, I would show you our local Clearfield data. We had some login issues, so we were unable to get that data, but next time we'll go over that. Just to show point of sale. So yeah, I would, I would say things are not, revenues aren't growing as fast. I do think we just need to keep an eye on this stuff. And, but overall, it's the budget tracked to what we anticipated, and we have healthy reserves. And if you guys have any questions, even the public, please, please let me know. Are there any questions now?
Yeah, I guess my only real question is, and I could look it up myself, but how much is our median income growth adjusted in the city over the last couple of years, you know? I mean, I could look it up, but I know we usually underpace the county, like I think the county right now is at a hundred or ninety-eight thousand for median income. Do we know where we're at in Clearfield on that, on that metric?
I don't, I actually don't know how to get that data for Clearfield specifically. If you know, please let me know.
I'm pretty sure the census data probably tell me, but, okay. Then the only other question is, we're seeing this small contraction, it seems. In data on, I know I've seen something the other day, like tariffs cost state Utah like around like three hundred or four hundred million. Certainly aspects on this contraction, do you know what, more expensive through tariffs by any chance? Just wondering if there's, just wondering like where, why we're seeing this contraction on the Davis County side, just kinda just asking.
So contraction as a result-
Yeah, cause like you said, we didn't have any growth in gross tax sales, so I'm just wondering, it's like it's negative, right? So, just wondering like-
Oh, how that correlates to tariffs?
Yeah, correct.
That's a good question, I don't know, but that's, I can look into that for next time, but I don't know that now.
Yeah, I mean, the state had, it's really weird, I mean, like the state has paid out a lot of money since they've come into play, but, and I would have actually expected that maybe there'd been some more revenue to a degree, but then actually it's probably not true. So, that's why I was picking your brain on that aspect to see if people are just spending less because of, just don't want, fear of recession, right? So-
Right.
And ideas of those fears of recession, kind of, we've been upside down in the inverted yield curve for a minute now. That's just treasure office speak, but because we've seen that, I'm just kinda seeing like where we are economically, if we need to kinda look at, forward ahead for bad and down the hatch, just by any chance as an organization, so. That's why I was just picking your brain, but it's okay if you don't have that data.
Yeah, those are great questions, though.
All right, thank you.
I do have a quick Aquatic Center question for you.
Yeah.
I know it's probably more FY twenty-six, but I think in conversations I briefly had with Eric, the pricing model we unveiled for the twentieth anniversary has been positive as far as increasing revenue trends. Is that kinda tracking with what you're seeing as well?
I don't think there's enough data yet.
We're gonna talk about that in the top five.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry for getting ahead of us.
And if there is data, there's not much, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, counsel, that takes us to our communication items. I actually, I'll keep it brief because I don't have anything to report. So, Councilmember Peterson?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Do we have a meeting next week? By any chance, just wondering, no?
No, there's no meeting this evening.
Okay, all right. Then, okay, so then I won't miss any meetings, I'll just know that I'll be traveling home to San Bernardino, California this weekend. Top three, most major city in the state of California, really, actually. So just any prayers as I go on all those travels, it'd just be appreciated.
Absolutely. Councilmember Ashford?
Got a few. Okay, so the open house for Station Forty-two is gonna be September twenty-ninth. There will be food, drinks, activities, fire truck rides, ambulance rides, so please feel free to come down and enjoy. October first is gonna be the Station Forty-one in West Point opening house. Then there are a few other opportunities. Looks like the Davis Chamber is having their annual business awards at the end of September. And that's gonna be from six to nine o'clock, and then I believe I've got a salute ball coming up at Hill from five to eight. I think the mayor might be on that one, but that one is, it's fall season, so everybody gets fancy at the base, and it's adorable, I love it. There are a lot of activities that you can participate in when it comes to the new farmer markets coming out and different community festivities since it's gonna be colder weather, so I highly encourage you guys to come out and enjoy.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Roper?
I just wanted to thank all of those in the community that have supported the Hanson family. The funeral is on Thursday, and it's just a heartbreaking situation, especially knowing the history of the family. They've been good neighbors of ours for, for quite a while, so just, it is a great opportunity to just be mindful of safety around us and being aware of what's going on around us, so just thoughts and prayers for their family.
Thank you, yeah, that's a tragedy, absolutely. And I did things a little backwards, Mayor, I couldn't see your face online, do you have anything you wanna report?
Oh, I'll bring back a whole bunch of stuff from DC for you, as we're sitting out here talking homelessness, mental health, and addiction, substance abuse addiction. But coming up Saturday, there's a couple of things going on. We have a, an event with USO at, oh, crud, JJ, I'll have to remind me what time because I don't have it in front of me.
I think it's nine to noon.
Yes, okay, thank you. Nine to noon at Bicentennial Park. Mike Maurer from the governor's office will be there to say a few words, and some other folks as well, and as will I. And then at noon, well, during the day on Saturday, the youth league has got a televised event that is happening at Clearfield High. I'll be doing an interview with them live on TV, if anybody wants to show up and join me at noon. Love to have the support, so.
It's game day, so I think ESPN rolls in with, with cameras and tents and all that kinda stuff to show off what's happening there, so we appreciate the mayor jumping in on that, but it's, it's a really big deal, it'll be at Clearfield High School.
Okay, I'll be sure to be there and to be decked out in football gear. Well, thank you, Mayor. Okay, JJ?
The only thing I have is to correct myself from a moment ago, it's on Saturday, nine to eleven at Bicentennial Park for the USO project. And I didn't have anything else today.
Do we have any other staff reports? Surestine?
Well, the, we don't have a meeting next week, but we do have one on the 33rd, a work and policy session. And the thirtieth, so far, we haven't scheduled a meeting. And then October seventh, we plan on having a work session as well.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene in our work session. Do we wanna do that in here, or do we wanna go back over to the executive conference room?
I think we're going back.
Okay.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn and move to the work session.
So move.
Can I suggest a friendly amendment at like in five minutes?
Four, a five-minute hour break.
Reconvene, reconvene at eight.
At eight o'clock.
Perfect.
Mayor, we're gonna keep this, sorry.
Hey, bye.
Mayor, we're gonna keep the stream going, so we'll just keep you on here when we move back into the other.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Stay on this call, Mayor.
Aye as well. I will not join you for this one, I will, I, it's bedtime, so I'm gonna leave this live-